Have your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for February 6, 2023. This evening, we have four board members present, and we have Mr. Malovich on Zoom. This evening, we have the minutes approval, we have a zoning amendment, and we have a historic board nomination. So the first matter on the agenda will be the approval of the January 5, 2023 Planning Board minutes. Do we have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, motion is made. I'll second the matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
No abstain.
Okay, and Caleb wasn't present, so he'll abstain. So we'll have three in favor for the vote. Moving along, we have a zoning amendment, the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290 thereof entitling the Lowell zoning code. The proposed amendment would change the required off-street parking requirement in the downtown mixed-use zoning district to zero spaces per unit pursuant to Section 6.14. The proposed amendment would eliminate language which states that parking requirements may be met by leasing spaces publicly in publicly-owned garages in the DMU zoning district per Section 6165. The proposed amendment would also eliminate the special permit required for 3 to 10 residential units in the downtown mixed-use zoning district pursuant to Article 12.1. Fran, are you giving the presentation on behalf of the staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone. So for the record, my name is Fran Seguiano, and I'm the Senior Planner in the Department of Planning and Development. So today, I will be discussing a proposed zoning amendment that would, we hope, encourage more residential redevelopment of upper floors throughout the downtown and also, in general, encourage more residential development in our downtown mixed-use zoning district. So, in summary, we're proposing to modify the existing zoning regulations to the city's parking requirements and allowed uses in our downtown mixed-use zoning district to support and streamline redevelopment of existing buildings in our downtown. This change would align with a lot of the city's goals in many of our planning documents and policies. So, starting with the downtown Lowell Rapid Recovery Plan, this plan identified vacancy issues as being major challenges that the city faces. Many of the buildings downtown require significant investment in order to get buildings in them, so removing regulatory barriers and the costs associated with that helps offset that cost since there will need to be investments in other areas for things like elevators, really expensive. A lot of the buildings need new elevators, so things like that. Many properties are vacant or underutilized, and it also identified that there are a lot of opportunities for upper-story residential uses throughout downtown. And the plan overall stated that we should, as a city, be encouraging developers to build a downtown Lowell in the upper floors. As you know, we're updating our master plan right now, but the current master plan identifies the vacant upper stories of commercial buildings in the downtown, converting them into residential units as a major goal and objective. And then this also aligns with several of the city councilor's motions, so this motion responses or this proposed ordinance change is actually responsive to motions from the councillor, from one councillor, from councillor Noon, but it also aligns with the Planning Department's goals and city policy goals. So, yeah, throughout 2021 and 2022, we received two motion responses that asked staff to look into ways to incentivize redevelopment of upper floors downtown. Why are these changes being proposed? As you are well aware, the current special permit and variance requirements that are required for these conversions are expensive and risky for applicants. There's no guarantee that the board, the zoning board or planning board will approve of the special permits and variances. Removing barriers to development may encourage expedited residential redevelopment of upper floors, removing that risk for developers. The ZBA regularly supports and approves requests for parking variances and special permits in the DMU, suggesting that these requirements may not be necessary, so they're basically rubber stamped more times than not. And the ZBA is very supportive of these types of projects. The planning board is supportive, the council, DPD, so it just feels like an unnecessary step at this point. And then, in addition, additional housing downtown expands the customer base for local businesses, increases foot traffic, and enhances vibrancy. So it really would enhance economic development downtown, would also obviously address the housing pinch that we're in right now. In addition, we have plenty of parking downtown. We completed a parking study in 2021, which found that we have plenty of parking capacity downtown in our structured parking, in our garages, particularly overnight during overnight hours. There is an abundance of garage parking. It studied six garages, but we actually now have seven public garages. This does not include the new Hamilton Canal Innovation District garage. So among the six that were studied, the garage that had the highest utilization overnight was the early garage, and that had a utilization of 53%. The Downs had 44%, the Leroy had 40%, but the other three garages had less than 10% utilization overnight each, so over 90% empty overnight, three of our garages. So almost half of our garages are over 90% empty overnight. And this does not include the Hamilton Canal Innovation District garage. I believe over 800 spaces in that garage are open, and this also doesn't include the new, the other new garage that's directly next to the courthouse. That's a private garage, so that's not even included. I'm not sure how many spaces are in that, but we have a lot of structured parking downtown, and it's time to fill those garages and build more housing in the city. What would the proposed changes include? The first change would be removing the parking requirement for all residential uses in the DMU zoning district. Currently, there is no parking requirement for all non-residential uses in the DMU within 1,500 feet of a publicly-owned garage. So in our permitting office, when a restaurant comes in, a store comes in, and they want to open up a location in our downtown, they're away from the parking requirement. It makes it easy for them. It allows the commercial spaces to be more flexible because they don't have to worry about getting variances, but we don't have that same level of flexibility for residences, so I just thought that that was important to note. And then, the other change would be to remove the special permit requirement for all residential uses of 10 or fewer units. A building permit would obviously still be required. So this, we are proposing for redevelopment of 10 or fewer significantly reduced discretionary permits. For developments with more than 10 units, we are still proposing to keep a special permit in place. And so here is just the markup, the redlined changes for you all to look at. So you can see that it just indicates that in the DMU zoning district, the minimum parking requirement would become zero spaces for all of these residential uses. In all other permitted zones, it would remain the same as it is currently. This just redlines a subsection that says that residential uses in the DMU zoning district, parking requirements may be left by leasing spaces in a publicly-owned off-street parking facility within 1,500 feet of an entrance to the use, because if it's eliminated, that's no longer necessary, that note. And then this, this is the annotated table of uses that shows that for up to 10 units, the use would be allowed by right, with the footnote that townhouse developments are not allowed in the DMU and a few other zones. And then 11 or more would still need a special permit. And then it has an additional footnote, 11, 3, 10, which is related to, I think the board has seen this provision. It discusses how if, when a development has 50 or more units, they need to sign, I forget how it's worded, but basically, they need to say that it won't be sold to a non-taxpaying entity. So that's what that annotation is about. So that would still be at play here for developments with more than 50 units. And that's really it. It's pretty straightforward change. I welcome any comments or questions from the planning board. Thank you.
Yeah, just looking Fran at the 11.310, large-scale residential projects. The projects consisting of 50 or more units, beds upon receiving approval and before the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall record a deed restriction on the property for the benefit of the City of Lowell, saying that the property shall not be transferred to a non-taxpaying entity, except in the event that such entity agrees to pay an annual payment in the amount of what would otherwise be equivalent to the real estate taxes on the property for as long as the entity owned the property. This condition and restriction shall be binding on the applicant, its successors, and its associates in perpetuity, and restrictions shall be approved by the City of Lowell Law Department before recording. That went to effect, looks like 121217, maybe. So at this point in time, for the public, so this is a public hearing, so does anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the new zoning change?
I have a question. Can I get a copy of the presentation?
Sure. I'm sure Fran can help you somehow. I know she emailed it to us, and we were able to print it out, so if not, you can speak with Fran, and maybe she can give it to you, because she printed out a nice one that we were following along with. So Fran, I take it you could give her a copy somehow? Okay, thank you. So going back, does anybody want to speak in favor of the zoning amendment? In favor, in favor, in favor. Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. Hearing none. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members who have any questions or comments. I just have one thing that stuck out for you in your presentation was, so it says, so businesses don't need parking requirements, but people residential do.
Yep.
Downtown mixed use. So when you're trying to balance that where a business would bring in more people than, in a residential use of people coming to visit, so you figure there'd be more traffic in the residential, I mean, there'd be more traffic in the business use than there would be in the residential, and the fact that there's plenty of parking in the garages. So this was referred to us from, so it goes to the council, law department, then to us through the city manager, and then after we make a vote on this, this will go back before the council, right? Did they have a date set on that yet? I knew, I'm usually following shortly after we make a recommendation.
Yes, next Tuesday.
Okay. So for anybody who's watching, so the planning board only makes a recommendation on the zoning change amendment here, and anybody has any further questions or comments, they can go to the public hearing, which will be before the city council, who makes the ultimate decision on any zoning amendment. So having said that, any of the board members, any questions? Mr. Vichette?
Fran, do you by any chance have the map available to bring up this, just so we could show with the DM?
Yes, I can pull it up. Apologies, I don't have one. Actually, I do have one.
I could hold up the big one I have.
I can pull it up. It might just take a sec, but I will pull it up now.
No, I guess what I wanted-
Actually, it was sent to us by email. Do you have that notification sent to us? It showed part of it.
I don't have email this laptop, unfortunately, but I can pull up the DMU boundaries. Okay.
Oh, great.
So here's the larger zoning map, and-
Here we go. We're getting in there. Perfect.
Yep. So DMU is this, like peachy orange color.
So just, I guess what I wanted to show as well, Fran, so right here, this whole area.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
So when you look at the streets that are covered, I mean, think of some of the key buildings right now. The Hildreth Building was just recently purchased, and I'm assuming this is, this will be utilized with that. No, folks know, I believe, the Lowell Five-Cent Savings Bank, whole site was sold not too long ago. And then we've got the courthouse right there on Warren Street, so that's, those are all key pieces of property that could probably benefit from this. And then, you know, once again, we talk about creating critical mass, and it's those of us that are in some of the neighborhoods, it's hard to fathom, again, really, people wanting to live that urban lifestyle, but that they are out there, and it's the only way we're going to create a vibrant economic downtown is to try to attract residents that want that urban experience. And I think I recently heard a phrase that housing is where jobs go at night. So, you know, obviously, if there is, and I know from prior projects where we've looked at parking garages in the evening, and they certainly are underutilized. You know, the balance will be, obviously, how many people that are stay during the day, and I mean, that's always going to be the challenge in that urban environment. But I think it's the only way to really take some key properties as well, and to try to, one of the big things is if we can, with housing, if we can help revitalize the downtown economy, I think that's really a win-win in that situation. So, you know, I'll give an update. We got a lot of, we have a lot of committees now, several committees working on affordable housing, but it's creating housing at all levels. They're going to hopefully be an economic engine. So from that perspective, I'm in full support. I do have a question, though, Fran. You know, we think of this as reuse, or I think of it mainly in reuse, right, in the area, but for new construction, and I know, you know, again, a lot of the, a lot of the progressive thinking is that, you know, special permits and design review create obstacles, but I'm a big believer in density by design. You know, some of the nicest communities across this, in the world, if you look at the architecture, and it's very dense, but it's very attractive. Lowell has, I can tell you, in the '70s, '80s, Lowell had some ugly development take place, and we were just happy that somebody was willing to build here, and we accepted just about anything. And I don't want to see that go back to that. So I'm a little concerned with, you know, when, not so much to create a barrier, but is there going to be some administrative design review for the, for the number of units that are basically, you're eliminating the special permit?
Sure, yeah. So anything in the, any project that involves exterior work in the downtown Lowell Historic District, which is very, it's a little different than the DMU, but it covers a lot of the DMU.
Does it cover a lot of that area?
Would, they get strict, they are subject to strict guidelines. They also, a lot of these parcels are in the National Park, so they, again, it's a double level of review. So number one, that. Number two, any, if a parcel was not a redevelopment project within the envelope of the building, if it was a new build, and if it was more than three units, then it would still receive side plan review. So the use wouldn't be a discretionary permit. They would be allowed, the use would be allowed by right, but they would still be seeking side plan review from the planning board, during which the planning board would have an opportunity to review for-
Well, design isn't necessarily one of the measurements.
I think how it fits in with the neighborhood is, for lack of a better word, is one of the things that you review under side plan review.
Okay. I mean, that's my biggest concern. I believe in density by design. You can create a good sense of place, but it has to be, you know, not just create housing.
Yeah, I can look and see and compare the boundary for the DMU versus the boundary of the downtown Lowell Historic District, but I do think they're very similar.
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, I'm in support of this, but I'd like to know that.
Yeah, sure.
If I get asked and I get ambushed somewhere, I could-
Yeah, sure. I will find that and send that to you all.
Yeah, okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vichette. Caleb, any questions?
Not particularly questions, just some thoughts to share. I actually live within the district in an apartment without parking as well, and I got a car back then, sometimes, sometimes with my fiancee then, places. But I used a garage for overnight parking as well, so I understand, you know, the kind of the perspective from tenant. I think, I think in terms of housing, this is certainly a positive change, and also for revitalization since some of the buildings are underdeveloped, underutilized, and also the parking garage. I think the board have revealed different recent proposals that we're heading toward a direction where it seems viable that the garage can take care of the parking demand from new housing. And I also hope that that's the direction, that the expectations of downtown living will change so that maybe there are fewer cars, people can rely on like more non-automobile mode of travel, and so that they don't have to demand for parking like as much as before. And I think we see a trend here going, and hope that, you know, that that remains how it is, because I think that even though in the evening, there might be fewer cars in the garage, in daytime, a few of them can get pretty crowded. So if people are still keeping their cars around, but they might, they might, they might need parking in the daytime, too. And so I think even though we might not have the special permit for these developments, it's important that the developer will still have some type of transportation demand management, like kind of approach to kind of shifting the expectations of their tenants, so that they won't need to rely on cars. And I think this is more than just regulation, because the zoning, the existing zoning was there, because we kind of have to use regulations to solve parking issues. But moving forward, I will, I will think that other city departments will have other methods of also helping maybe promote sustainable transportations, and also even structuring parking fees in certain way. Those things will also help kind of ease or smooth up the parking demand when developers don't have to build them anymore. So I, I think, is this, there's some, I would say, uncertainty I see, but I think from the trend that I think I have been observing as a board member, I think is worth the, worth the risk. And those risks can be mitigated by, by other approaches to promoting, like such as what I said, promoting transportation demand management and also other type of transportation. And so I'm in support of the change, and I think, I think it will make downtown a more vibrant place. So thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Janey, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and questions. So I'm really supportive of this, and I'm excited by the potential impact it might have. I think for the reasons that Fran outlined about increasing housing stock, creating economic development opportunities in the downtown mixed-use district, specifically that district as well, and just having more, a more vibrant downtown. So I'm really excited by that. I think anecdotally, I always feel like there is so much parking and so many new garages going up. And so to see kind of evidence that, you know, these parking lots or parking structures are under 50% utilization, that kind of felt, you know, right, based on my experience in downtown. So I think kind of limiting how many more garages we put up is a good thing, in my opinion. I did want to ask, and actually just echo Caleb's comment as well, that the city just really continue to invest in, you know, not, people who are not driving a car by themselves, so people who are walking, biking, and taking public transportation, be it locally or mass transit, that, you know, with the Lowell Forward Plan and the Sustainability Plans, that I think Lowell is headed in the right direction, but just that the city really continue to make investments there. I think, I think we are, but just that, I think that that will be kind of the lasting impact of this change. And then I did just want to ask a couple of questions. One, I know it has to go through city council approval, but I was curious like when it would go into effect and if it would have impacts to, you know, we have some major residential developments, I think, happening in downtown Lowell, so I was just curious, like, if it would affect current development plans.
My understanding is that when they vote on it, it just goes into effect immediately. I know in towns, they operate a bit differently, and they have bylaw, they have a bylaw instead of an ordinance, and the Attorney General's Office needs to approve it in towns, but in cities, they don't need to review them for whatever reason. So I believe it just goes into effect immediately. And projects that are currently under review, they could withdraw the portion of their application that, that is seeking a variance, for example. So if they're seeking side plan reviews, special permit variance, my read of it is that they would be able to withdraw parts of their application because they no longer need that, those discretionary permits.
Yeah, what about, it probably isn't retroactive, like what about projects that are in construction?
Um, it's a good question.
Yeah, just some, just something for the city staff to, you know, think about and consider, you know, if it happens quickly. I don't know that it will.
Sure. I think if the variance elapsed, then, well, the, if it's under construction, the variance is considered exercised. So, yeah, that's a really good question. I'd have to look into it.
And then my only other question was, was there a comparison of like maybe other cities in Middlesex or in the state that have similar zoning laws, where they don't require parking for residential units? I was just curious if there was any kind of comparison there.
Good question. I know that Cambridge recently eliminated, I think- Good question. I know that Cambridge recently eliminated, I think, all parking requirements, but obviously Cambridge is very different than Lowell. It, it's similar in size, but they have the MBTA running through it. It's more dense, it's right next to Boston. Other cities that are more similar to Lowell, I'm not sure. I'd be curious about Salem and their regulations. I, yeah, staff can definitely look into it. The only city I'm aware of that has eliminated it is Cambridge, and that was citywide. And that's not what we're proposing here, so we'd have to look into that.
Yeah, it might just be a good opportunity to see how it may be working in other cities that are more comparable to Lowell.
Just to follow up on that, usually when the city council, once they vote, it goes upon the passage to that, that date in time that they've approved it, unless they set a date certain for, to go into effect. So if they vote on it like next Tuesday night, which, you know, it would go into effect as of that date, unless they say upon the passage, be in this future date. So it's usually on the date of passage.
Okay.
And I think on plans that are already in construction, it would be the old rules that would be applied, but they could always come back in for an amendment. And then back before the boards, they gave it to them.
Gotcha.
Because when they got their approval, it was under those conditions. So those conditions are still in effect.
Gotcha.
You know, that's how it usually is, you know?
Okay.
What they're saying, you applied for this, you got this, you got all your approvals, you know? So it doesn't go back in time and change the conditions. It's what the conditions were at the point in time that, that they got the approval.
Gotcha.
They're going to affect.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So it's like, you met the criteria then, so it's not going back in time to change the criteria.
Right.
So, and so, but they could come in for an amendment and say, okay, we don't have the parking, and now would you consider, like when they come before us to change it, to change amendment to one of the conditions that we may oppose?
Gotcha.
So they can come back on that way, you know? But at the time, it'd be all the rules that were in place upon the passage of what they did. So they just can't go back in time and say, okay, we want to change it now, but because we already got our approval. So it would be basically, if they want to change, did not have the parking, they'd have to go back before the board that granted it, and that's what they would consider.
So Fran, I do have another question. I know usually in, in the project past, a lot of the development are more limited by parking requirement, but now that if this out, like of the, you know, taken out of the rule, the dimensional requirement will be more like of a limiting factor. The staff looking to, you know, like kind of the.
Right.
Outcome or consequences of that.
So the DMU is actually really, really permissive. I believe there's only a couple dimensional requirements at all. So in the DMU, it shouldn't, it really is permissive in general. It allows pretty dense requi, uh, development.
So, so, yeah, I think it'll be interesting how side plan, side plan coming to view. I mean, they don't need parking, they mean they can build up?
I think the Historic District is going to be fully the most, is the most strict of the things they will face moving forward, because I know that Steve Stoll has mentioned that, I don't know that the Historic Board has ever permitted anything taller than five stories. They're really particular about the massing, the colors, the windows. They're really particular about everything, so that will dictate what can go downtown, basically.
Well, I think it just, it'll be interesting. I mean, that's a slightly more subjective, you know, so, so it's not hard rule as say, say parking. But I understand, they have been waiving parking, but to a certain degree, right? So, just interesting dynamics there.
Caleb, just to your point too, the DMU zone, there's only really one requirement. It's a 25-foot frontage. So there's no minimum lot size, no minimum lot area per dwelling unit, no side yard setbacks, no rear yard, no garage setbacks, no minimum side yards, no rear yard, no height, no, no, so there's, there's no restriction. It's really just the parking. So from that perspective, that was really, and quite frankly, one of the, the issues I've had is, is in many cases, and it makes it that much more contentious, is they'll come before us or any of the boards, variance for variance, and yet we're getting all these official reports that it really, there's plenty of capacity. But then it makes it look like, well, look at, you look at all the variances that are being granted, you know? So if it works, it works, it does and it doesn't. But I, I just, like I said, I think, I think we want to be clear, it's only the DMU zone. I know we mentioned Cambridge here, and I know there's, there's even some, believe me, there's some, there's some groups in the city that want to do with parking citywide. And, and so obviously, this is not, this is not doing that at all. This is just taking one of the most dense areas of, of, of the urban area that really traditional downtown buildings, and that's what we're trying to maximize. And, and again, use it as an economic engine at the same time as creating housing. So it really is, you know, from that perspective. But yeah, this is really one of the few only restrictions is the, is the parking requirement that's in the zone. So it really takes away just about everything, other than the 25-foot frontage.
And the Historic Board review is major. Also, the National Park influence is, is strong. So it's not going to be a free-for-all, it's still going to be really strictly regulated. It's just that it removes some extra steps and costs for the developer.
Yeah, again, my big thing is design. I just think, you know, we can increase the density in some of these areas, but it's got to look good. You know, it just can't be for the sake of creating housing. So I'm just, I just, that's a big concern that I have.
Yeah, I'd, I'd add, I know Fran, that you mentioned like design guidelines for the Historic District, so maybe just taking, maybe the staff taking another look at those. That way it's not necessarily another review, but it's more guidelines for what is permissible and what we're really looking for. I think Jerry's point is a really good one. I will share, I work in Providence. There is downtown design guidelines and downtown design review committee. So, you know, maybe not going to the committee level, but at least maybe, I think Providence is actually similar in some ways to the city of Lowell. So maybe just as a reference point, that might be helpful.
We tried some time ago, Sinead, when Judge Prowakis was there, tried to develop a guide, a guide booklet for different zones and.
Right, yeah.
That you could hand somebody.
Yeah.
And they come in, this, this is really what we want to see.
Right.
And when you talk about barriers, developers don't mind, just don't, don't.
Following a formula.
Yeah, right, exactly. Don't have it on shifting sand. Just tell me what you want, and then, okay, then I'll go. But, you know, that's a, that's a good point. And that was something that was attempted some time ago, but.
Yeah, it is really, it is almost challenging at this point with the Historic District, because we can't do anything that would conflict with the Historic District in the National Park. And the Historic District in Lowell, my understanding is it's very strong. And it, I, it's like, it's, it's not a zoning thing, it's, it's its own state law or something, because it was created during the seventies or eighties when there was the threat of just like wiping out the whole downtown, when people were really in that mentality. So it, the, both the Historic District and the National Park was created to really lock in the urban form downtown. And so the Historic Board has a lot of authority over what goes downtown. And that's something that could, I, I don't know that the planning board could do anything about it. I think it's a state law, like I think it's created through a state law. So that's something to consider, but I'm not really sure with this board, how, I don't know.
We have one representative there, so.
What was that?
Yep.
We have one representative there.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, you can just tell Richard your thoughts and he can represent you. But yeah, Historic District is, is really, and I can circulate those guidelines if you're curious. I'm sure Steve Stoll would be happy to.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so that you guys know. Yeah, sure.
And again, if you could just circulate that with what area it covers.
Yep, yeah, definitely the, the boundary, but also what the regulations are, like what, he has a bunch of guidelines so, so that you can see what the development would. Because it, it is sort of like one of those guidelines that you're describing, where it's very prescriptive, so I can circulate everything that we have.
I think the Smith Baker Center falls into.
What was that?
Smith Baker Center may also fall into this as well, right across from the library, right? Yeah.
I think that the edge of the downtown Historic District, I forget.
Because we extended it to go like where the old St. Jean de Baptist Church is. We extended it some time ago. I spoke at the city council for that a long time ago, yeah.
Okay.
So it got pulled, it got pulled down Merrimack Street, down in that direction. So I do know that.
Okay.
Mr. Malavich, Bob, I know we have you on Zoom. You have any questions or comments about the new zoning amendment, Bob?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. Having lived this for 50 years, I understand the downtown. And I think the upper stories haven't been developed for a long time, or if ever. They used to have offices in them, but now they're vacant because no one has to deal with elevators and all the other things. So I think this, this proposal is a good idea to expand the upper floors and make them usable. Also increases the assessment of the building too. But I, there was another thing, I was, I was happy to hear that we still have side plan review on even the, even these buildings. So we can get some kind of influence in discussions with the applicant. The, the city, after the, I was involved in the National Park development and all that. And the, the city, I think someone, I think the DPD published a book called The Building Book. It was a booklet that showed what any new construction or existing should be worried about in terms of design. And I don't know if that building book is, has a copy anywhere in the DPD, but someone should look over that and see whether or not that can be adapted just for the DMZ or whatever the downtown zone is. But I, I, I agree with this proposal and I think it should be explored, have, should be done. And if it didn't work in a couple of years, then we would renew our look at the parking situation. That's all my comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Malavich. Thank you. So the planning board makes a recommendation to the city council, whether we go along with the zoning amendment as proposed or not. So what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
I move up for recommendations.
Okay, so Mr. Malavich has a motion on the floor that we adopt the recommendation for the zoning amendment to go before the city council?
To the, to the make of the motion, Bob, can we just kind of add the, the, kind of the reasoning in the sense that it supports the creation of, of additional housing, revitalization of, of, of buildings in the DMU, DMU zone, as well as could, a possible economic driver for the downtown as well? Just to kind of.
Sure, add that language.
All right, perfect.
So the motion's in favor and seconded by Mr. Vichette.
A second.
Mr. comments to be forward to the council for the board's reasoning. So we have motion in favor. And seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Chair, vote chair, is any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Five in favor, none against, the recommendation to go before the city council. As Fran indicated, I believe this will be on the agenda next Tuesday night before the city council. Thank you for, for your presentation, Fran, very helpful. Moving along, we have a nomination here for the Historic Board. Mr. Lockhart is our current representative, and through the Historic Board, their term lapses on February 28th. So the planning board makes a recommendation to nominate a new member of our board. It goes before the city manager, who makes the, the appointment and has to be confirmed by the city council, because indicated the planning board has one candidate nominated by the planning board. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Richard Lockhart to the Historic Board. A second.
Thank you.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, Mr. Lockhart is recommended for Historic Board. Do we have any further comments or notices from board members?
Chairman, if I may, just several, several different updates. I guess I'll start with the oldest and then we'll work our way up. On January 31st, the Rock Bridge Working Group Committee met. And believe it or not, the project is still on schedule. And it was really, the, the, the design has now four observation decks, two on each side of the bridge, and it crosses diagonally from the same spot on Wood Street and crosses over to Old Ferry Road, excuse me. It'll be four lanes wide, and it'll be two bike and pedestrian lanes, one on each side as well. And then we also talked about the design, there will be lighting under the bridge as well. And so the effect, we saw some pictures of, of the applications, really is great. If you have an opportunity tomorrow at 6:00 PM, I think if you go to the MassDOT website, you should be able to have access, but there is a public meeting showing the progress on the bridge. They, and at this point, I mean, they still feel they're on schedule. We're looking, we should have a ribbon cutting in 2028, so everybody stick around until.
So open in 2028?
Correct, that is correct, that is correct, yes.
Not a shovel in the ground, right?
No, 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 I hope not. I hope not. And, and then the, and I, and I give everybody credit on that, on that working group, because it's the unsung people, I mean, we have a lot of people get kind of recognized for talking about the Rock Bridge, but these are the people that have been serving on this committee and have been giving suggestions and meeting for quite some time. So it's nice to see the progress. Also, on February 1st, the master plan, there was a first master plan public meeting. Fran, I don't know, do you want to give the update on this? I mean, because you, you.
Sure.
One of the people that hosted it, so.
Yes, so we had a public workshop number one, which was a, one of many public workshops that we will be having. This one is focused on visioning, so it provided Lowell residents and community members with boards outlining existing conditions, so sort of sharing like maps and data, because I, I think a lot of, we work in that world, but a lot of community members benefit from looking at like housing data and transportation data. And throughout the room, they had an opportunity to fill out comment cards and vote for, for example, different types of housing that they'd like to see constructed in Lowell. So that was the station I was at. So it had the matrix of like, what type of group do you think we should be building housing for? So like young families or elderly people, and then at what density? So you could put your sticker on that dot, and then there was a lot of open-ended comment cards. It was really nice, it was really well attended. I want to say at least 150 people were there, minimum. It was really well attended, people were really enjoying it. There was a kids' station where kids could write in what they wanted to see. So they wrote like trampolines and pools, which was kind of funny. Yeah, I thought it was really, the energy was great, really good event. So we will keep you apprised on upcoming events and surveys and things that you can take.
Yeah, I thought I saw that there was a survey that was currently open. Is that still, is it still open?
Correct, yes.
Great.
Survey is still open. If you need the link, let me know. I can also just send it out.
I think on the city website.
It's on, yeah, it is on the city website, yeah.
Okay, grab it. So, yeah, no, I, I tell people somewhere around 200 people, there's somewhere in there. So yeah, it was.
I agree, it seemed more like 200 plus, yep.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was good, it was well done, and Fran was hosting it with the consultants. And then we are, are, oh my goodness.
Housing.
Mercy, a community organizer was introduced as well.
Oh, yes.
Yes, yeah, the Community Health Center, so it was good, it was a good event. And then February 6th, today, we held our first housing subcommittee meeting. And that is really being coordinated through NEMCOG. And that is, Fran was on that as well. And the, it, it's on a, it's, it's on a, two tracks here. It's, it's working to, to assist Lowell and its housing production plan, and it's also going to be used as part of the master plan process as well. So. So, stay tuned, I believe we're going to be meeting every other month, maybe two months or something, yeah.
Yes, sounds right.
You know, looking at, you just kind of, I guess it's getting very complicated now in the city. There's a housing choice coalition, there's this housing committee, there's the master plan committee, and there's a, I must say, I will say, and there are voices that needs to be heard, but there's duplication of a lot of the nonprofits on these committees, and, and just, it's about housing balance. I understand what the wishes are, so it'll be interesting to see how this kind of progresses, because there is a need, but obviously we'll see how this progresses. But I really was hoping, I'm hoping this committee will be able to reach out to other parts of, of the population, because I don't think it's getting, now we're getting a balance in, in just kind of the, I think, the nonprofit world. But I understand, they're the advocates, they're the ones that are out there, so it'll be interesting to see how it develops.
Yeah, I will also add that with the general master plan, we are trying to reach every group in the city, not just the nonprofits, obviously they're very important, but we're trying to really, really capture a representative cross-section of Lowell, people that aren't usually involved in planning processes. That is, that's a large part of the reason why we brought on a consultant was to bolster our outreach, because city staff alone can't do that, unfortunately, so.
I just wish there was a way we could even do it in the tax bills or something, too. I'll be honest with you, to just try to get, because I think, I think there's just going to be a big portion of everyday people that are just working hard and coming home and trying to enjoy life that don't get, don't get excited by what we're doing.
Totally. I asked my mom to go to the workshop, and she was like, nah. Then I made her do the survey, and I made my grandmother do the survey instead, which was easier for them, but I tried, and she was like, even though it's important.
Yeah, no, I know.
She knows it's important, it's still not worth leaving the house on a Wednesday for her.
Something did get good come out of this, I think, Fran, right? We'll try to do this, even when you're telling people it's Lowell, Lowell Forward or Lowell Moving Forward, a lot of people don't associate with master plan, nowhere in there was the verb of master.
Someone brought that up to me, so we're going to, we're going to clarify that.
Yeah, that's good.
In the next messaging, next time that we do blasts, clarify Lowell Forward, our comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, master plan update.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no, I think that'll be good. But a lot of good things going on, a lot of moving parts, unbelievable, yeah. So, anyway, that's an update of all the various committees going on, and, yeah, besides my day job, I'm pretty busy right now.
I just have one comment. A little while ago, Fran sent us out a memo, which was for the city of Lowell land use boards and committee handbook. So, I've had a chance to read a little bit of it, and I had a chance to read the whole thing in context. So, just a couple of things I recommend to all the board members, just take a look at this when they have a chance, because it does go into, you know, the procedures, you know, for the meetings, talks about basically what our quorums are, what's the responsibility of the board members, it talks about the public hearing processes, the public record law, and then it goes on and tells us about the open meeting laws that we're bound by, the conflict of interest laws, and for board members, you know, if they have, if they want to, if they have a conflict, whether they should, how they should address that matter before the boards, so, and it has some definitions for our usage. So, it is pretty helpful. So, just, I'll just say, if you haven't had a chance to read it, at first I skimmed through it, and then I had a chance to digest it all. I had a couple of questions about it after reading it, and before the meeting, I had a chance to speak with Fran about it, and she was very helpful in answering those questions. So, just more of an FYI, it's very helpful and tells us a little more about our responsibilities. And the other one, like I said, it talks about what we have to do if we have a person remotely, you know, they have to basically notify staff that they're going to be participating remotely, notify the chairperson, and then at the beginning of the meeting, the chairperson has to announce that that person will be doing, attending remotely. I think I've been pretty good about that, when I've known that the board members might be doing it remotely. I always try to say at the beginning that we have so-and-so doing it remotely, like I did tonight from Mr. Malovich, but I think that's a very important that we have that remote access, especially if people who are handicapped or aren't feeling well, and they feel they still want to communicate. I know the state has extended the guidelines for the remote participating in public hearings, and there is some talk that they might keep it open permanently, so they feel it's more useful for a lot of the public use to intervene and speak at public hearings without having to come down, especially in inclement weather, that mattered, and therefore we are more accessible to the public. So, it's just a good tool to refresh some ideas, even if you've heard them before, but just to bring them back to, to remember them. It talks about what our quorum should be, but, yeah, it's very helpful, and I appreciate Fran for sending that out to us, so I just wanted to make sure that the board members are updated on that. So, I have nothing further. Any other board members have any further comments? If not, I think we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, vote chair. Good night, and thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.